Everyone, our student representatives. I have not heard what they are attending.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry. They are not attending. They have Wednesday at the high school. Yeah. Joe, Joe.
And we do have Catherine on Zoom today. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments this evening.
Okay. Let's move on to the consideration of the minutes. I move to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Board meeting of February 7 and the Budget Workshop meeting of February 28, 2024, as written with correction.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Okay, that unanimous. We'll move to the public comments section. Are there any speakers who would like to, whether on Zoom or in the room, that would like to speak through your public comment section? Seeing none, we'll move on to our reports.
Nope.
We will go to your superintendent report and then Catherine. Is that what you mean?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. She doesn't have a lot of time, so if you don't mind.
Sure, I don't mind. We'll go ahead and begin our discussion from our old business to, for the board to discuss the remote, the remote case survey. We have a survey that, it's a template here that we've written out. It takes into consideration the responses and feedback that we've been given from parents. And so you have a template in front of you. We can discuss that language. Just take a minute to review it and go ahead and give your feedback.
It is, but I, it is, I.
Catherine has a question. Catherine has a question.
Perfect. Catherine?
Hello, thank you. So I have some questions about how we plan on approaching the topic of information with our board and our administrators. And one of the things Jim mentioned in his superintendent's report is that our school administrators have provided or made a framework for us, survey questions. And under policy DVA, which I shared with Alicia this evening, I think we, I'm wondering what we think about being mindful of sticking with policy versus the administration of schools and that we do, are intended to leave to the school buildings themselves. Are these questions that, is there something about these questions that we want to make sure that the schools include? Is this, where is the energy or motivation that this would come from the board? And this is the first I've heard of the board sending out survey questions. So I have some questions about that. So if you could help me understand that better, that'd be, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Catherine. Julie? There are two different surveys. There was a survey for staff and that was something that was already sent out that both Jim and Megan did collaborate on. There was another survey that was going to be just a two-question survey that was going to be sent out to parents. We had a pre-board meeting and at that pre-board meeting, we discussed that there was some parental input where parents wanted to, felt like they, the way that the questions were asked might meet their needs better. There were two parents that actually had some feedback around that. And, and my thought to you, and I had included this in the email today, that the board kind of serves as a bridge between the community and the schools. We were kind of hoping to, to give them a voice and kind of collaborate that way, but all the while also following policy. So I didn't have a chance to review what you had sent me. I had attended the forum at the middle school, but we'll definitely take that into consideration as well. I'm looking forward to hearing more information from the results of the survey that the staff had taken. We haven't gotten that back yet, but I was hoping that we'd include that too in tonight's meeting and discussion. And Jim, I don't know if you want to weigh in?
I'm not, I'm not really ready to weigh in at this point. I'm not. This is a, I think, a situation that's going to end up with some very mixed results would be my guess. And I'll be intrigued to see how the board chooses to handle it.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions or comments? Monica?
Hi. Yeah, I'm interested in that language. I don't, I haven't read anything that contravenes the board seeking input from the public. So if you want to read that language out, that would be helpful.
Catherine?
Yep. Okay. Hang on a second. I will also put it in the chat. So this is, you have your policies available. This is DVA. And it says, "The board shall concern itself primarily with broad questions of policy rather than administrative details." That's key. "The application of policy is an administrative task to be performed by the superintendent and their staff, who will be held responsible for the effective administration and supervision of the entire Winthrop Public Schools." So I think, the board is not a bridge, in my understanding and the work that I've done, the board is not a bridge between the community and the schools. I think is what you mentioned. The, the board is the overseer of Jim and Jim oversees the schools. And we absolutely want to hear from the community, but we, I think we are interfering with the functioning of the school when we put ourselves in this position. I think it's perfectly reasonable that if we want these questions and we want parent information, then we can suggest and ask that the administration add these questions and send this out to all the parents. I think it's the, the organization of the schools. We want to make sure that we are promoting a sense of trust with our schools, with our administration. We don't want to interfere with those communications between the teachers and the parents and the administration and the parents. And absolutely, if we have some specific, you know, concerns that we want to make sure are addressed, then it is our responsibility to communicate that to the administration, to Jim, and then make sure that that is followed up through that venue rather than are stepping on other people's toes.
Thank you very much, Catherine. I appreciate that. Is there, any other comments from the board regarding the survey language?
So can I, let me pick up on that because I, I think that's a good jumping off place. I agree with Catherine's interpretation of policy, but I, I don't have any issue with, with, I think the, the survey should come from the administrative team, not from the school board. And, and I, and I think, I wish there was another step in here. I would, I would love to have a, a group of people who have strong feelings about this, set up a time to come in, meet with me. Because what I, I was not here for the discussion. I listened to it. I was on Zoom. And what I'm, what I'm missing is what people think they're going to gain. And I think remote is a really good option, but I would be honest, I'm not, it's not a mountain I'm going to die on, a hill I'm going to die on. But I think when I, when I look at the data that we've, we've collected over the last two years, the simple data, like, and I had put it in a letter that I was planning to put with the survey that we had created. And it did actually, because of what happened last week with the power outage, it actually becomes pretty, pretty much the same, very symmetrical. Last year, we had six total days where we could not have in-person learning. Three of them ended up being snow days, three of them ended up being remote learning days. This year, we've had six again. Ironically, we've had one snow day this year and three other weather-related days. So that's a little bit weird. I haven't experienced that much in my career. And we've also used two remote days. So not that it makes a difference to, to a lot of people, but later on, we'll look at the calendar. The calendar as it stands right now, because of when Labor Day falls and what we have to do with CAFSE, which is part of a different conversation. Our last day with no days lost is Friday, I think it's Friday the 13th, whatever. It's close. And then the following week, if we get bumped into the next week, is going to be Juneteenth, which is a, now a federal holiday. So I think there are good reasons to think about using that as an option. I'd be happy, I would love to have a conversation with people because I want to know what, as I'm listening to their explanation that we can make it up this way, we can make it up that way, which schools have always been able to do. If it's about capturing, you know, or not losing, because I don't care what, what option you go with. If you have anything other than an in-person full-day learning experience, you're going to, you're losing something. So adding them at the end of the year, making, you know, making them up. I thought it was really interesting. I got, I got a, a letter sent to me, or an email sent to me from a parent who said, well, today was an early release day. Why wouldn't we just make today a cold day? And that actually the way the state is looking at things would come is two days. I was like, oh my God, that, there's zero makeup of, of learning time. With that option, you lose a whole day. You have a half day that turns into two days, a half day which is one day, and then it turns, do it that way, it turns into two. No recovery of any learning opportunities. Saturdays extending by an hour, there's all kinds of options that I, I don't see an administrative team, and the staff doesn't see that those are, those are beneficial to learning. Are there ways that we should and could, or could and should do maybe a better job with our remote offering, remote opportunities? I think definitely. But I think the, in particular, and I'm not, nothing about the grade school. Grade, grade school teachers are amazing. But I think the, the middle school has, has made some pretty significant changes already with respect to what's happening on remote days. And the high school has always done a very good job with, with the remote days. So to me, while even a remote day, under the best of circumstances, is a loss from a academic standpoint, it's, it's way better than any of the other options. We also try to do it, not try to, it's one of the things we have to do. In order to, that counts as a day, we have to feed our, our children. We have to send home food. In order to do that, we have to make that call. I've made that call five times over the last two years to, to do that. And we let parents know a day in advance. To me, if I'm a parent, I'd rather be told at noon or 1:00 the day before, what's going to happen the day before, as, the next day, as opposed to waking up at 5:00 in the morning. And somebody suggested, well, let's have so many remote days, I mean, the snow days, and then go to remote days. That doesn't work either because I'm not, I have to be able to make the call the day before. I'm not going to, there's no scenario in which we're going to wake up, and I start, we start doing that at 4:30 in the morning and say, we're all out of snow days, so we're going to go to remote days today. So that is not a viable option. So I just think this is a tool that, and I, and I think specifically for Winthrop. During COVID, I know what was, my colleagues were doing. I thought we did a tremendous job with, with remote days and what we were doing. And we invested a lot of time and money into the equipment and a lot of training. And it would seem to me kind of pointless, not pointless. I think it would be a huge waste if we just, if we don't continue to, to allow people to use that, that knowledge that they gained during that time, use the equipment and, and do things. I, I have no, and Julie and I already have had a conversation, you know, can, can we get better? We can always get better. Not just the remote learning and everything, but I, I, I think it would be a real loss for the school system if we lose that as an option.
I think, thank you, Jim, for your comments. Catherine had a really good point a few weeks ago. We were discussing this in having a clear idea of what our children can expect from remote days. And so we hadn't really discussed that. So that's something that, not as a board, but more administration, just have something in place there. I don't know whether that's a, a training or whatever, something that you would decide, but I think maybe that is a compromise with some of the parent concerns.
So, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Monica.
I should. I feel strongly that the board should survey our parents. Our parents have, you know, reached out to you. I know some parents have contacted you about their concerns about inclement weather. At least that's what I've heard from parents. When you were on Zoom and parents brought that up, you kind of shut it down. At that point, I made the suggestion, I mean, you gave the explanation similar to what you did just now. At that point, I made a suggestion that we find out, we get more information from the parents because we are all elected to represent our community's wishes for their schools. That's our job. That's why we're here. So if it's not being done and parents are bringing their concerns to the board meeting, which they did last meeting, I had parents subsequently follow up and thank me for the suggestion of the survey. This is information gathering and then we discuss what we find.
Thank you, Monica. Is there a way, so we have, yep. Sorry, Catherine, I can't, I can't see you. I can't see you. Go ahead.
That's okay. Well, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt Alicia. Did you have something you want to say?
No, go ahead. Thank you.
I guess, I think, I, I guess I would ask that we have further discussion about this because I think it is actually rooted in our policy and it is something to really consider about how we want to interact as a board and work with our schools and our administrative team and Jim. And I think, I guess I would ask the board to have some further conversation because I think this is a really big position to take of how we want to work with the community, with our schools, with our administrators, and what type of relationships we want to have with them. And I think it's perfectly reasonable that if a, I, I want to learn more of why it would, where the energy is that it would come from the board versus the schools. And if the idea that they didn't think their voice would be heard, then I think that's what I understood, that for some reason, that they wanted to tell the board rather than the schools. I think as a board, we want to support our schools. And if there is some sort of conflict, then we have some work to do with that communication, which is part of our responsibility. And that if there's a feeling that parents aren't being heard by schools, that that's something that we would work with the schools to give them that information so that they can do that work rather than interfering and becoming the middleman between that communication. So.
Thank you, Catherine. Did you want to make a motion to have?
I think this is supposed to be a discussion, not a vote.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Do you want my ear?
Yep, thank you.
Kelly Hooper. I'm wondering if it might make more sense, instead of circumventing the current policy that says you will make sure that the surveys happen, kind of, meaning trust your administrators to make sure it happens. Instead of circumventing that, maybe what you should be looking at is a very well-advertised forum, forum where parents can come in and have their discussions. Yeah, I see you shaking your head and I understand part of what you're thinking is no one's going to come to it. But my thought also is, if somebody is passionate about this and they have strong feelings, they will either come or they will send their thoughts. If they're not willing to come or send their thoughts, then they're not as upset as they say they are. Right? They're two different things, coming or sending their thoughts. If they're not doing either of those, then maybe they're just unhappy, not necessarily wanting change. Having remote days is stressful. I'm fortunate enough to work at home, so I can watch my kid sit at his computer for eight hours a day doing schoolwork. And that really stinks a whole lot. But asking him, would you rather have remote days or, you know, go longer in the school year? Well, I'd rather have remote days every single day. And I think keeping the kids' opinions in that is also really important too, especially the older kids. I know with younger kids, it's a lot harder because there's more eyes on, hands on that needs to happen during remote days. And that's unfortunate. We've all been there, right? We've all had younger kids and we've had to do that kind of stuff if, if we've had kids in school or any time during COVID or beyond. But I really think if I were to get an email from the school board or the superintendent's office asking me how I feel about something, even me, I would be less likely to respond than if it came from Joe or Lori.
Thank you, Kelly. I had thought about the forum, but we had such a attendance last meeting. I didn't want to make them or have them without again because I felt like we had some needed support and, and I've been emailing still a couple of parents. It's certainly something that's, you know, an idea. Oh, Tip.
May I speak?
Please.
Good evening. I wrote it down because I knew I was going to be nervous. Thank you for the opportunity. Yes.
Don't you teach public speaking?
Yeah, it's always, you know, do what I say. No. Thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding remote snow days. I feel it is important to share my perspective as a high school teacher. I would like to share four points. One, remote days are not perfect, but learning does happen. I usually have almost as good attendance as a normal school day. If a student can't join the meeting because of internet issues or having to watch younger siblings or whatever the case may be, we work with that student to catch them up just like we would if they missed a normal school day. We find ways to move learning forward, even though the circumstances are different. Even in my video production classes, I find ways to have them practice their skills at home with their own equipment, whether it's just their cellphone. Two, for elective classes in the first semester, remote days are the better option. If we call a regular snow day, they are added to the end of the year, which is second semester. So those first semester electives never get that time back. With remote days, we can still move forward with learning and not lose that time as much. Three, AP classes suffer as well. If we stop doing remote days, the AP tests are set dates in May. They do not change. So those classes never get that time back either if we do snow days because they're added in June after the test. Remote days help avoid that loss of time. And AP courses in May are already at a severe disadvantage to most of the rest of the country because of when we start school. In a lot of the country, they start two weeks to a month earlier than we do. So they have that much more time to prepare for the exams. Four, learning loss is a real concern, but tacking days on in June does not guarantee learning will happen. By early June, students' attention is flagging with the warmer days and promises of summer fun. I know there are concerns about remote days. I know they look different for each building. I know we are one district. However, we are three buildings with three, with three unique clientels with their own unique needs. What works for one might not work for all, but please remember that goes both ways. And consider the needs of all learners. I believe we can work together to make this better for everyone without taking away something that's working for a portion of the population. Thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you, Tip. That sounds really good. I think it's important for both the board to hear that and also parents to communicate that perspective as well. We don't hear that perspective very often with regard to remote days. So I appreciate it. And, Jen?
Yeah, a couple more thoughts. First of all, I want to say that I think a survey to the community is a great idea. I'm not sure that I love this survey. I think the survey, I think the simpler, for, for surveys, the simpler the better. What I was suggesting earlier, I, I have been very disappointed in my four years here in Winthrop with, I want to have forums, I want to have community, but I don't subscribe to the notion that people are afraid. I, I don't buy that. I've, people who've, who've come forward or people who have been properly directed to the right place to go to get information, I think have, by and large, found a great deal of success with that. I, one of the reasons I took this, and I don't mean to single anybody out, but Eric is sitting out there and Eric is somebody I've had to know and work with, is some committees and stuff. And I have huge respect for Eric. So when he's saying he has some concerns, I want to say, let's put a group together. You're talking to, and look at you now. I don't mean to be looking, but you know, if there's a group of people, let's sit down and talk about this. A focus group. We can make it a forum, but people aren't going to show up. I want people to, but people do show up to forums. We need to work on getting people to come out when they have things. And I'm happy to spend any, and I've, I've offered, I'm going to offer it again. You don't have to come to me for, for a forum. If you, if you want, somebody wants to organize something in their house and come over and I'll come. I've, I've done that before at the places where I've been. I'm happy to do that. I want the community input. Frustrated by board members who continue to say that, that we're not interested in what they have to say. That is a furthest thing from the truth. Very interested. It's been very frustrating to hear a lot of people who tell me and people, without any board doing what they're supposed to do, which is direct them to where they can get the information or let me know or direct them to me, whatever the case may be. That's a whole different topic. We're talking about remote learning, so I'll try to stay focused on that. So I, I think we should do a survey. I think the survey should come from the administrative team based upon hearing the input from the, the people who showed up at the last meeting, hearing the input of, of the board who will also think we should do a survey. That's, you know, that's, I think that makes a lot of sense. How it's come up with is, is really up to you. And then I really think that I would like to invite anybody who's listening to this or anybody who's here, that if you want to get together 10, 15 people and have an opportunity to sit down and talk about the pros and cons, I mean, some of the questions that are in here. Why are people, to me, it seems really obvious that this is a really good option. So I'd like to have a conversation, not a survey. I'd like to have a conversation about why people think this is not a good option, why it's a waste of instruction or whatever the case may be. And I think having it in a board meeting is very limiting. So I, I think we need to, to open up that possibility. And that ought to be a direction for this school board and this community moving forward.
Ivy?
I do got to say, having children in all three schools. I agree with a lot of what Tip says, having a child who is AP classes and stuff. It is, takes.
You could put that, if it was me, I would still.
It does take away. And then having two children in grade school, one that is, has learning challenges, which is difficult. So, and then my middle school child, it is different between each, and you can't, you can't treat them all the same. You know, I can hear what the, what the community members are saying about, you know, the grade school, you know, but it doesn't necessarily work with the other two grades. So I can see where there is issues and stuff, but like Tip said, I mean, we really need to take that into account.
Thank you, Ivy. Monica?
I really appreciate hearing from Tip and I, and she's an exemplary teacher. I had the privilege to teach alongside her. And so I definitely appreciate hearing. And so I definitely appreciate hearing the teachers and the administrators' viewpoint. I say, let's have a survey and find out the parents' and families' viewpoint. And I will say that I do think, and I'm not invested in whether that comes from the board or from our principals or from the administrator, I don't care. Um, what I do care about is giving our our families a voice. And I think it is the most democratic way. I, it, you know, it may be hard to remember what it's like to have little kids. If you don't have little kids anymore, you are so busy. You are so busy when you, especially when you work or you go to school and you come home and you feed your kids and you, who has time to come out for a forum? It's one more thing. A survey you can answer in the privacy of your own home in your own timeframe. That's why I'm suggesting this. I think it's the most democratic option, the option that is likely to have the most response.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Tmiede. I have a sixth grader and I've been a parent in this district for 17 years with two older children. And I do feel that um, that involving parents, um, increasing parent involvement is, should be a goal for all of us. And I, the last time that I filled out a survey was in 2020. That was four years ago. And I do feel that we are being given a voice as much as I felt we did years ago. And I know other districts, most of my coworkers have kids throughout, you know, the Augusta, greater Augusta area and lots of different school districts. And many of them have already filled out multiple surveys this year about different topics. And just the optics looks good. It looks like you are interested in what parents feel. It looks like you're interested in, like, I like the idea of students having a voice in all of this too, especially at the older levels, to know what they feel like about the remote days or just in anything in general. Um, and just to go a little further, um, I do want to talk about parent conferences. I look at the calendar and it looks like there's no, there's no parent conferences for this coming year. And we've had them for decades in this district in the spring. And I just wonder when do parent, when do teachers have the opportunity to talk to families to say, I think that your child needs to be retained. I think your child maybe needs to have psychological services. They seem to have a lot of anxiety at school. I think maybe you should consider your child being tested for something, you know, like a learning disability, autism. Those things are being placed on the teachers to do on their own time to make um, an effort to call the families, to do that after school. And it's not happening, you know, and parents and teachers are not being compensated for all this time. So you have very conscientious teachers that are thinking, you know, I teach the younger grades. I really want to have conferences. I really need to be talking to these families about, you know, whatever questions they have, about whatever concerns I have. And so the teachers who are very conscious are doing that without being compensated their time. And I just feel like the teacher's time is very valuable. And parents' input in our children's classroom and with their teachers is very important. And I just feel like for us to have lost conferences in the middle of the pandemic and have no insight for regaining conferences is is really concerning. Am I, am I wrong that there's, is there a plan for conferences for next year? I mean, no, no, it's not there this year.
Um, this is something that we address in the public comment section because this is a discussion right now just on.
Oh, on, oh, okay, sorry. Okay.
I appreciate your comments, so thank you. Does the board have any more questions regarding the language of the survey? Um, I'm just wondering if we can, you know, take Jim's idea, work with, you know, the administrative team and just come up with questions together that both address the concerns of the parents and um, you know, just I wonder if we can collaborate more, I guess, so that we can all, I think Kelly might have a suggestion for us.
Thank you.
I apologize. Eric, I didn't see you standing up there.
I wanna cut it, sorry. Um, just when you're doing whatever language it ends up being, um, I would caution you against using an other option if it's a multiple choice. Um, because it's really hard to get a good idea of what everybody's thinking of and putting it into a statistical um, point if everybody's writing in things. So if you can maybe give them four or five options instead of two or three and other, um, that would get you a lot closer to where you think you need to be. Um, a lot of times when you put other, you're gonna get a book. Um, and it's hard to pull out statistics from a book.
Thank you, Kelly. Eric?
I don't really have anything new to say other than thank you for talking about this. Appreciate it. Um, and it has been interesting to hear the differences between Kelly's experience as a parent of a middle schooler, I think, um, Tip's experience of the our perspective as a teacher at the high school. And it's uh, promising and I look forward to my kids getting that experience as well. Um, I'd be curious to see more of a perspective from elementary schools just to see what um, teachers feel like they're providing for kids on remote learning days. But yeah, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I know that in Jim's, he'll get to this superintendent agreement, but I mean, superintendent before. Um, we will bring up some of the result, bring up some of the survey results that um, Megan and Jen had received from the teacher feedback perspective. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Jessie Silver. Um, so I hear what you're saying about the survey. And I, I actually do like having a other field simply because I don't think we should limit parents' input. Um, there may be some really great ideas and great feedback from parents, um, given that. But um, I think we, as a community, elected the school board um, and all of you up here to represent us. And I do like the idea of having the school board involved um, in maybe formulating some of these questions or just giving input, just something because these are our children. Um, I want, I want to be involved. And I know, um, we did do a forum last year with you, Jim. Um, it kind of, I don't know what happened to it. It kind of fell by the wayside. There wasn't a lot of parent involvement in that. Um, I think there maybe were 10 or 12 of us. So I, I love the idea of a forum, middle school, um, they are doing them every month and I love it. There's a bunch of us that go to that. And it's really helpful, if anything, just to keep us informed of what's actually happening at the school. And they took some of the parent feedback. Um, we love the idea of a newsletter. Um, Brancook rocks. We get newsletters multiple times a week sometimes with updates from them. And so we went to the middle school with that and Joe is sending us a biweekly newsletter and it's awesome. Um, I love it. It gives us information about what's happening with our kids at school. And last year at the grade school, um, you know, sometimes I just kind of wondered what's going on, what's going on. Um, we did get some newsletters, um, printed off. A lot of parents aren't using the website. It's just one more place to go to. But if you get something in your inbox and your email and it's from your kid's school, you're very likely to open that and to read that, to get that information. If you don't, you don't, but it's there in front of you. It's available to you. Um, but I just, I, if anything, I just think having more parent involvement and using our school board members to just give that feedback um, to administration and to the schools is more than helpful. And you're gonna find a lot more parents that are gonna be less, I don't know, unhappy. I don't know if that's the word really to use. I don't think unhappy, but um, just feeling that their voices are being heard and that their kids are important. And it's not just the company being run. It's the school.
Thank you. Jessie? Any other comments? Monica?
May I share with the interested parents the preliminary draft of the of the survey? I'd like for them to be able to know what we're looking at, the language from, it comes right from the questions from last week's meeting.
In what capacity? Like just, I just mean, yeah, just send it like just here right now. Can we also get a copy of this? Yes. I guess it's, you know, it's kind of tricky, right? We're trying to um, you know, trying to um, take, you know, had a really good attendance. Um, I was encouraged by that last meeting. Um, you know, we've had a lot of parent engagement. It's interesting trying to, you know, I'd like to hear more about, um, you know, the survey results that that Jim and Megan did when it comes to that section. Unless you want to, if it's for right now, I don't know.
I just, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but Jim and Megan didn't do any surveys. The principals did a survey.
Oh, well, thank you. I don't mean to give credit.
I'll take it.
To the fuck, please. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think we're ready to share. I think the intent was to put it all together.
Gotcha. Thank you. So there's no more feedback, right? This concludes our discussion? Yep, go ahead.
I'm just not feeling any sense of direction. I know we're not voting on this, but um, I, so the, I, the real question is, who's doing the survey? The board or the administration?
I would like to look at the policy myself. I I did have, like I said, I was at the forum. I I didn't get Catherine's message in time. I would like to look that over first just to make sure. Um, and then maybe proceed from there. So it's a discussion, so we don't have to take an action.
Well, if we don't take an action, we, we're not, we're not gonna send them a survey until we decide.
And my thought is, you know, it is March. We're kind of over the hump of snow days. I hope, I, I hope I'm not jinxing us. This could be bad. I didn't mean that. So I'm, I'm thinking this is gonna apply more for next year. And I don't know what, you know, will the, the results will be when, you know, when it comes out. Um, I really, my goal is to be able to work with the administration as a board and feel supported. I want everyone to feel supported while also taking into account, you know, parents' ideas and concerns. Um, I don't like that it feels divisive or that it doesn't feel good. I don't want that to happen. But um, I'm sad that that's kind of how it's feeling. It's not my intention. Um, I didn't think this job would ever be easy, but my goal is to try to work, to make, to do the best so that, you know, the greater, um, we are meeting the needs of the bigger population, I guess. Kelly?
If the board ends up sending that, will you make sure that Catherine's last name gets added to this as well?
Yeah, we fixed, we polished it up.
Yes, thank you. Yep, there were some autocorrects and mistakes there. Okay, then we will close that discussion and move on to the superintendent's report.
I'm just finished ready.
Yep, absolutely. In a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so I sent my report out. I'm gonna go through some of it because it applies to a little bit of the the discussion of the remote day surveys in my report. Uh, and I I just want to give a little bit of overview of some of the things that are on the agenda um, just for informational purposes, particularly for the community members that are here. The elections of administrators is on the agenda. Um, and it may look a little weird to people who haven't seen it before, but the way we've done things is we have our first and second year administrators. We do, we treat them the same way as the teachers. They are on theirs uh, individually. And then people who have been in more than two years, they, they go on like a continuing contract like the teachers. Uh, and so they're all lumped together. So that's why the first bunch are individuals and the the group of people who have been in more than two years is in a group at the end. I'm happy to talk about that more at the time. The uh, my other side of notes here. Um, the budget is, I mean, the the school year is fiscally 75% um, done. And um, looking at the financial report, the two areas that have been an issue continue to be an issue. Uh, transportation is, it shows we're over $302,000. Um, can be a vote. You know, we still have 25% of the year left, actually more than that. Um, and the reason for that is is really two things. And I've mentioned this before, but I have to keep mentioning it. We spent over $230,000 on new buses that were not in the budget. Um, some of that may or may not be reimbursed depending on what we do with asking the town council to designate funds that that are undesignated from the, from the last audit. Uh, we're gonna do that anyway because, well, I'll wait and share that after. And at least 70,000 of the other deficit is from, we're paying rental fees for three buses. And we have pretty much the whole year. We are getting reimbursed from Lion Electric for that. Um, that is is due to end as they are talking about giving us, bringing our buses back to us. But I have a meeting scheduled on um, Monday with the president of Lion, uh, members of DOE, Josh and whatever. So I've said, our community is gonna be less than enthusiastic about bringing those buses back without some sort of assurances of what they've done with the buses since they took them back from us. So um, bottom education will be a part of that meeting with us. Otherwise than that, the system administrator, I'm sorry, school administration continues to be over about 8%. It's gonna stay about that. And the reason for that is really simply that the dean of students, which this year is 50%, um, dean 50%, uh, teacher is 100% taken out of system administration. It's just a decision that I made, so it's, it's going to look like it's, it's more, over more than it is. If you think about it, there's a corresponding reduction or savings in Article 1, uh, which is where half the teaching. But I, I personally am not a big fan of of sort of breaking up the salary uh, when it's, you know, when we don't need to. Uh, I think next year, when we put together, that, when that position is, hopefully everything goes well. A hundred percent in school administration, that'll just make more sense. So, so that's why that's over. I want to remind you all that this is something for these started because our new, our new system um, allows us to do encircuses. And you remember, of course, I say this every meeting, that 85 to 90% of our sal, of our budget is salaries and benefits. So if you look at that, that means accounting for all of our salaries and benefits for the rest of the year, uh, we still have about one and a quarter million dollars left uh, for, for people to spend. I have, uh, in our last administrative team meeting, said we are what I refer to as a hard freeze, which essentially means that nobody spends anything on any, out of any areas without getting my permission first. And that, that's, it, it sounds worse than it is because obviously we have sports, we have trips and stuff and people don't need to get my permission to play the spring sports and to pay officials and to, those things are kind of a given. Um, but for the most part, you know, it is not unusual for schools to, this is the first freeze I've had to put in place here at Winthrop. But with what you know we're facing for a budget challenge for next year, we kind of have to. We don't really have a choice. Um, some really great news. Uh, I think it's really great news. We have received emergency approval, thank Josh for doing this, for three new diesel buses. Um, and um, I don't know what the status is gonna be on, on the electric buses. My guess is that maybe they're gonna become something that we, we use during fair weather because they seem to do well. I, I personally, Josh also is, is supportive. I like electric buses. I like that concept. Um, but our experience has been less than, it's been very. But our experience has been less than, it's been very underwhelming. So we'll see. I also try to be careful because I've already, we've already been sort of chastised for being what I think honest about the situation. So I'm trying to be careful. So, but we have three new buses. We also are approved for three more buses in the next year. The issue is going to be, we have to go to the council. I mentioned earlier about undesigned funds from the audit. It's going to be somewhere around three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for those three buses. If we can find that in the undesigned monies and get them to designate it to a capital fund to purchase them, then we can get them this year. Pressy, who's the company we generally work with, as well as they have buses available, and we might be able to get them as early as by the end of April. So I think that's really good news. So as I said, I intend to ask the council, and speaking of the council, April 2nd, I think I. I actually put it under, it's under old business, so I'll wait and talk about it there. But April 2nd is when the town council meeting is, when I'm going to ask for the money from the undesigned, from the undesigned to designate it and talk to the meeting where we present the budget. So there are a lot of work to do in a very short period of time because I can give you a little pre-warning. There's not a lot of information to share updated for you for budget discussion tonight. Administrators listened to what you guys had to share last week and they are from the workshop and they go working on it. So we are, we're not really prepared to do that. I also, last thing I want to say is the current last day, right now, which I mentioned before, there's four storm days and two remote days that we've used, is June thirteenth. It's a Thursday. I usually do it after your questions.
Does Ward have any questions for Jim? Monica?
I do. So do we have a schedule for the budget meetings between now and April 2nd? I've received some contact from members of the community who would like to attend those budget meetings, but we need to publish them so people will be able to know when they are.
They were published, they have been published multiple times and they are, it'll be on every agenda, every regular agenda now until we have a budget. So every budget meeting will have some time. Hopefully after tonight, we'll have more specifics to talk about in terms of potential cuts or impact on taxpayers, all that type of information going forward. We have a budget workshop that's been scheduled since the beginning of the year. And that has been published and we'll send out the agenda for that. I don't have to, I can give it to you right now. After that, we will, we will continue to meet. You know, if we don't, if we don't have a budget by the April 2nd town council meeting, that's just a presentation. So we'll, we'll give them the information that we have at that time. Be nice if we had a budget to give them, but we are also scheduled, we have a regular board meeting on the twentieth, which the budget will be on it. We have a March twenty-seventh. The board, the board, the board meeting schedule is posted on the website and has been since the beginning of the year.
For the workshops?
Everything.
Any other questions for Jim regarding the superintendent's report? Okay.
So just to finish my report. We do have a significant number of retirees this year, which, you know, they all have plans to move on. But we have one resignation, John Williamson, who's a ed tech at the high school and special ed. We have Ed Bear, who is going to retire again from the high school. He's a math teacher. He came on my first year, no, my first year, well, my second year here. Basically, he's going to be here for one year. He's been in three now, and so he's really done this time. Michelle Riley, Sheldon Riley, middle school social studies teacher, longtime social studies teacher. And Joyce Hopkins, a longtime ed tech at the middle school. And Jackie Rosell, who is the special ed administrative assistant, are all retiring, yeah, retiring at the end of this school year. There are no transfers.
Thank you, Jim. Moving on to this chair report. I did attend the middle school forum today. We had a really good discussion. There were probably ten of us, including some of the staff that were there. We talked about things like raising money for the eighth grade end of year celebration as they move on to ninth grade. We talked about how they're working to improve academic rigor. That was a question that I had asked. They're doing a really nice job at building community and having a lot of fun activities and engagement among the students. And I'm just really happy that they're, that they are doing those forums. That was my second one that I attended. I also wanted to take a moment to follow up about comment, Tim and I had, actually, Tim had asked me a question. And I had talked to Jim about a comment that was made by a parent regarding the softball team, where the Winthrop would be having their own team this year. And I did receive some clarification about that. Those things have to be done way in advance, more in advance than, you know, just the beginning of the season or before the season. Because there could be consequences for having to pull out an already scheduled season. And those consequences are not being able to be, I guess, maybe Jim can expand further, actually.
Yeah, if you have a, if you pull out after the schedule has been done, it's a two-year penalty for the school. So if we decided that we break the agreement that we made back before in December, then we would be penalized two years.
Thank you. And then the next follow-up that I wanted to discuss was really just the survey language and kind of why the board had decided to do that. We did have the parents reach out. This is, of course, mark work typically falls before the discussion, but since we moved the discussion, I'm not going to go over that again. So that really just concludes my report. We'll go ahead and move on with the, there are no, committee reports. Oh, Tim, did you have something?
No, no, I was going to say that we do not meet.
Okay, thank you. That was the finance committee. Policy did not meet. We are in the throes of budget season. We have this understanding that we're not working on policies actively at this time. Negotiations?
Catherine's not here, so I will report. Okay. The, we have, negotiations has been ongoing since the fall. We last met on February twenty-ninth. Yes, we did meet the day there was no school. We got power and lights and power and heat. That was nice, which we didn't have during the administrative team meeting earlier that day. So we met on twenty-ninth and the MEA Uniserv director, Alison Whiten or Litten, I don't know how she says it, they attended. And we discussed salaries. Our next meeting is March fourteenth.
Thank you, Jim. There are no administrator reports. Moving on to the return of school protocols and COVID projects. I'm Megan White. Thank you, Megan.
Hi, I'm Megan White, Director of Teaching and Learning here for Winthrop Public Schools. Part of the agreement for all of our COVID funds is that every six months at the board level, we revisit our return to school protocol, our safe return to school protocol, and review briefly the projects that are still going on that are funded with COVID money. It is a requirement. I'm doing the performance report right now and I have to report all of those dates. So I'm here to make sure we're all on the same page and aware of those. Our safe return to school protocol has really been to follow CDC guidelines. As our official stance this year, we did have several bullet points that were presented to the board this fall and actually voted upon. At this point, we're really suggesting that we just continue with following CDC guidelines and revisiting the safe return to schools as needed, whether it's on the six month or if something happens. You may or may not be aware that the CDC protocols have changed. And by having a nice, vague, aligned plan for that means that our nurses are able to move fluidly with that policy or with, excuse me, the recommendations that are put forward by the CDC. So that's where we are with safe return to schools, business as usual. And then I just wanted to update the board on our COVID project. So at this point, our last COVID grant is the SR3 or the American Rescue Plan. That was our largest of the three grants. That one has to be fully expended by September thirty, twenty twenty-four. And we can only spend money on things that are happening during the grant term. So we can't spend money on things that will be expended in October of next year. It has to be spent, done, invoiced by the end of the fall. So we've actually finished a lot of projects, obviously, hopefully, right? We're in really, really good shape here in Winthrop other districts who didn't really have a three-year plan like we did. Are in a little bit different shape. So the projects that we still have going on this year in this upcoming summer, I guess we could also say, is going to be our CUSP program, which is our middle school and high school summer school program. We will be, let's see, I'm going right through my list. All of this is published online, so folks can go and check that out at our safe return to schools. We are using some of these funds this year. We've used for digital learning technology and curriculum. We've used this to fund our computer technician, which we spoke a little bit at the budget workshop last time. So we've been able to fund him fully for this entire school year. Through that, we've done some improvements to Power School, so our student information system. We've done some work on that so that if things happen in the future, we're able to access student information more readily. And we have worked with a consultant for that, who has a lot of experience building additional pieces into Power School, which has been really, really, really wonderful. And we're continuing that partnership small this year. We also started last year with our, and you've heard about it, I think, from the administrator reports last month, we have our Frosty and Mud sessions. So those are two credit recovery sessions that are funded through COVID money during February and April vacation. So excited to continue that this year and have it be funded outside of our regular budget. And at this point, those are all the programs that will be continuing and funded with our ARP money.
Thank you, Megan. Does Ward have any questions?
We'll be good.
Okay, we've seen them. We will move on to the, our old business with our budget discussion.
So as I already mentioned to you, there's not a new draft to pass out. As soon as we have one, I'll distribute it to the school board for you to have. Obviously, we did have a workshop last, last week. The administrative team met on Thursday, the day after the workshop. And as I said, the administrators have been submitting suggestions for addressing changes in budget. It's a huge challenge, our budget at this time. What I would refer to as the request budget is up fifteen percent. That's a huge number and obviously not something that is, I think, is really sustainable. I know I mentioned it, it came up at the workshop last week, that we are, our twelve, fifteen schools in the Kennebec region that were looked at per pupil expenditures, we were thirteenth. That's really bad. That's a bad look for us here in Winthrop, that there are only two schools that pay less per student than we do. That's been something that's been happening. It's something that's going to need to be corrected. It can't be corrected in one year. If we somehow stupidly tried to pass a fifteen percent increase, that would put us above the state average, which is, of those fifteen schools, there's only one that is at or above state average. So that's not our specific goal. However, we need to stop moving in that direction. I think the board gave the administrators and me some good direction last week. I appreciate that. And so hopefully, before our next meeting on the twentieth, we will have a draft budget and you guys will have it so you can see it in advance of the meeting. And so other, some other leads that, you know, school board meeting and board discussion will happen at the board budget workshop on March twenty-seventh. I remind you all, and I did a few seconds ago, but just reading my notes here, that the school budget will be reviewed with the town council on April 2nd. That's a Tuesday. If you look at it and say, wait a minute, they meet on Mondays, they do. They're not meeting on the first, they're meeting on the second. I don't think, I don't think it's because they don't want anybody to play April Fools on them. Actually, I do know why they're, they're not, but they're meeting on the second, so that's not a misprint. And that'll be, I think it's at six o'clock, but I'll confirm that for you all. So other than that, I don't really have anything else to share with you right now.
Any questions for Jim regarding the budget discussion? Okay, moving on to new business. I move to elect Hannah Kibbin as a Winthrop Middle School science teacher, as recommended by the superintendent of schools.
So moved.
Seconded. Is there a discussion? Or actually, no, I'm going to, Joe Burnham, did you mind speaking on behalf of Hannah Kibbin?
I think Lori's on Zoom.
Oh, is Lori on Zoom?
She's on Zoom.
I, I, um, thank you, Lori.
Awesome. I'm thrilled to have Hannah join us. She came in at a time of, we had had a lot of absences and disruption to learning in the eighth grade with our science, in the science program. And Hannah came in as a long-term sub. And I had the opportunity, as well as the staff, to work with Hannah for six weeks before we went through the interview process. And during that time, I have noticed her to be a team player, flexible and responsive to our student needs. She takes feedback, has made adjustments in her teaching based on that feedback and as a solid management team. Her enthusiasm and love of teaching and of the sciences has really just lifted our eighth grade team and the school itself. She's fit right in. You'd never know that she had only been with us as a sub. She just came right in and took, took, took the bold light of horns and so does she. And became a team player and wanted to meet all of the needs of the kids. So she is not only teaching eighth grade science, she's also teaching our two scheme classes. So she is seeing sixth and seventh graders as well with hands-on activities for integrating science, math and technology.
Thank you, Lori. Her first day, well, I don't know if it was her first day, but Annalise is in her class. And she came home and she was so thrilled about her new teacher and all the fun hands-on activities that they've been doing. And so I know I emailed Lori right away and let her know that that was very much appreciated and shared Annalise's feedback. Moving on to. Oh, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor? Thank you. That's unanimous. Catherine's on with us, so four, four zero. I move to.
You need to ask for a motion. You don't, you ask for a motion to.
Oh, is there a motion to elect?
What are we talking about?
Yep.
Oh, yes.
I move, I don't say it to me.
Need a motion to elect.
I need a motion to elect Joe Burnham as the Winthrop Middle School Dean of Students and Athletic Director for the year two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Oh, discussion. Are you ready?
I make a motion to, oh.
All in favor?
That was, all in favor? Perfect, four zero. I make a motion to elect Paul McGovern as District Technology Director for two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Four zero. I make a motion to elect Samantha Baldwin as District School Nutrition Director for the year of two thousand twenty-four to two thousand, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Four zero. I make a motion to elect Josh Wheeler as District Transportation Director for two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-five. as District Transportation Director for 2024 through 2025.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Three zero. I.
Three, three zero?
Three zero.
An abstention or?
That was a no between, right?
No or an abstention.
Right.
You abstaining or?
I'm abstaining.
Oh, okay. Thank you for the clarification. I, moving on to 6.6. This is the category of administrators that are listed at the bottom of the page. That's for the two-year contract, so they'll all be grouped together. I move, I make a motion to elect the following administrators for the two-year contracts for 2024 and through 2025 and 2025 and through 2026. We have Alexis Duscleius, the Winthrop High School Dean of Students and Athletic Director, Jay DeForre, Winthrop High School Principal, Joshua Farr, Adult Education Director, Susan Fossett, Special Education Director, Jolene Randall, Winthrop Grade School Principal, Debbie Rodriguez, Winthrop Grade School Assistant Principal, Lori Smell, Winthrop Middle School Principal, Joel Stoughton, Facilities Director, and Megan White, Director of Teaching and Learning.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor? Three zero. And is that an abstention?
No.
It's a no.
That is three zero. 6.7, a discussion regarding the 2024 to 2025 school calendar.
So that's included in your packet. Oops. That's included in your packet and when I first started doing this job, we had a lot of flexibility around schedules. We really don't, or calendars, I should say. We really don't now. We are, this, this data is very particular about us being aligned with the, with CATSI, which is a high school program. So our grade schools, our middle school, all have to fall in line with that as well because obviously we can't have separate calendars for middle school and grade school. So part of my process is to meet with the association and Kim was on here, but so I met with the, the co-presidents and discussed this. This has changed since the original draft. But, you know, basically this, I, I, they had some questions and I asked Nick Gannon at CATSI if we could make some changes and that would make us have too many dissimilar days as a, as a district. And so we, we pretty much are locked into doing this. And I just want to point out that the, with no days at all, we go to the 12th with no, no storm days, no days, whatever term you want to refute, I mean, call them, the last day is Thursday, June 12th. So we would not have to have many snow days to take us to the 19th, which is Juneteenth. So we would, you know, we'd have to, that would have to be a holiday and a non-school day. So with five, with five, this is actually, Colleen didn't change this, so. One, two, three, four, yes, she did. With five snow days, which we have always built in, the last student day would be June 12th, 20th. So, like I said, there's not a great deal of flexibility. Including, I want to point this out, that April 16th, 18th is a non-school day. It's not workshop, it's just a non-school day. And that's something we have to do to be compliant with CATSI. We only have five workshop days. If we made that a workshop day, that would give us six workshop days, which we don't have in our, in our current contract.
Does the board have any questions for Jim regarding the calendar?
I just have a quick question. I might have missed what you just said, why we aren't starting before Labor Day.
Yeah. That was, there was an agreement amongst the CATSI schools to start after. And so that was, that was my exact question too. I thought, my thinking was, if we go and they're not in school yet, that that wouldn't be dissimilar, but that was, that is dissimilar. And it is important, there's a financial penalty for being dissimilar. It used to be 10 days, now it's five days. And it used to be that everybody, every school could, could be dissimilar five days, no more than 10 total as a, as a region. Now it's five days total. And if we all happened to, because it couldn't happen, but theoretically, if we all had the same day that was dissimilar with CATSI, that would count, not as one day, that would count as five. It's one for every, every school that participates in CATSI.
Any other questions for Jim? Okay, moving on to public comments, whether in the room or on Zoom.
I have one.
Yep.
I really think it's going to, it's imperative that the school board have a discussion about adherence to policy. That may be coming to us anyway, but I, I just want to get it on here so we, we make sure that we do that. I think we need to decide if we're going to follow policy or we're not going to follow policy.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room?
I guess what I spoke of earlier about.
Sure.
So I'm sorry, because I didn't know we were speaking only about remote at that time. So about the calendar and teacher conferences and where we stand.
Jim, I had a brief conversation about this. I think you can probably. Okay. You can answer that too. Monica?
I would like to add that to the agenda, discussion of adding back spring conference, parent-teacher conferences for our next agenda.
I am aware that that is something that's negotiated under the teacher contract as.
No.
No?
No. We're even going to add it to a future agenda and we're not going to talk about it. That's, our policy is not to talk about things that come up under public comments.
Okay. Then let's add that to the agenda. Any more comments, whether in the room or on Zoom? Anyone in? Okay, there's no executive.
Okay, so I'm hearing a lot about policy and this is about our kids. And when people have questions, I think it's polite to respond. There's just so much policy, like what is going on? So I, you guys said there's budget meetings and Monica had asked, as a board member, when those meetings were because parents had questions, they wanted to attend them. I've just been looking on the website and I only see, I kind of threw a lot of digging for this. So I'm glad she asked the question, but it wasn't answered. You said it was online and I can't find a budget workshop scheduled online. So I guess if somebody could point that to me, point that out either now or later, I think members of the public would like to be aware of when those are. I see one meeting under school board meetings and it says workshop, but is it my understanding there's more than one workshop meeting? Or is that the only one all year long?
The, the board has a schedule and one of them is listed as budget workshop.
Right.
Every meeting budget's discussed.
And then there's separate meetings though, where you need to discuss the budget or no? It's always just here at the school board meeting and that's the only workshop meeting?
So they, like any other, we can always add, there's, there's regular meetings and then there's special meetings. And the special meetings could be for a number of reasons. One of them could be workshops. So there's one schedule and we could add four or five more workshops if we wanted to. We added one last week because the budget is, typically we do it in regular budget meetings, but it's been so late this year. But that's a calendar, that's a schedule.
Okay.
We don't do separate budget meetings.
Okay. And then also something that you had pointed out regarding six workshop days. It looks like you said there's one extra, there's only five. And because of our schedule, the last day of school would be on the 12th. I believe you said next year. I'm just wondering if there's normally only five, why couldn't we make one of those workshop days into a regular school day?
It's always an option.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other public comments? Move on to school board comments. Are there any board comments? Monica?
Yes. So one of the things that I would like to see added to the next agenda, it sounds like this is going to be a long one, but clearly we need it. And that is a discussion regarding our methods of communication. Right now, those are on the website. And as Jesse Stover pointed out, that can be difficult for many parents to navigate. So I would like for us to discuss our current methods of communication and see if we can enlarge those. I would also like to say, as a school board, okay, it is not a matter of deciding not to follow policy. As a school board, it is in our purview to amend policy as we see it is needed to be amended.
Thank you for your comment. Any other board comments? Tim?
Yeah, something just completely different. I promoted this last year, I'm going to keep saying it again until it happens. Patriots Day, Pitter Patter 5K, support David, class 2027. His class, you know, end of the year trip. Mr. Ed Van Tassel helps with that also, cross-country team, and also all the seniors. Yeah. And we had some teachers last year show up, a lot of students. So I'd like to have as many teachers, school board members, do a 5K. Choose to walk, that's fine, but it's a fun, fun thing to do on a Saturday morning.
Is this on Patriots Day or is it a different day? Because I think we had a mess up last year.
A mess up last year.
It was the 13th, whatever that is.
Yeah, we're calling it the Patriots Day, but it might not be right on.
On Patriots Day, yes. My husband showed up for the race and it's about.
Eight on 15, it's 8:50.
And also Joseph is also part of that too, so we're supporting both of our.
But the, but the, it's on Saturday the 13th.
So it's.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Jim. I have no comment myself for school board comments, so.
I do, I just want to wish the high school drama kids good luck this weekend at the One Act Festival. I will be there to attend, so I will be glad to provide some feedback. They're going to be amazing.
Thank you, Amy.
Lauren, sir?
Yeah. We have no executive session this evening. So without objection, I declare this meeting adjourned at 7:23.